I need to order. Thank you for coming this evening. And please join us in the pledge. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the flag of our Constitution, our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you do the roll call? Here.
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 Here. Under the chairman's comments correspondence, we have a resignation letter from Nancy Maithen as a member of the Library Board of Trustees in her letters dated September 10. Council has set up a new email address for any town resident to address their suggestions, concerns, or questions directly to us, which we will review and respond to immediately or as quickly as we can. That email is towncouncil@watertownct.org. We will put it also on the website so that if you wanted to go directly to the website, find the email address you could. We are looking into a way to allow residents to voice their opinion on the manager versus mayor situation. And as soon as we have something finalized, we'll let you know, hopefully very soon. Subcommittee assignments were made. The ordinance committee will be chaired by Anthony DeBona. Robert Tassina is a member along with Ken Demers and Lou Raza. Finance committee is chaired by Jonathan Ramsey. The Public Works Committee will be chaired by Ken Demers, members Robert Retallick, Robert Tassina, and Rachel Ryan. Police Commission liaison is Lou Raza. Board of Education liaison is Jonathan Ramsey. Fire Department liaison is Robert Retallick. And Economic Development liaison is Anthony DeBona. And that's it for my comments this evening. At this point, we will entertain comments from the public. Anyone would like to address us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always think through the national process, I have this one, just to let them ask the law. How am I live? So here's your question.
Thank you. Now we're live. Can you hear me? I prepared a written statement. I gave a copy to the clerk, but I'm just going to go off script a little bit and say, Mr. Retallick, you're breath of fresh air. Welcome to the Watertown Town Council with your background for this town. We're just very, very happy you're able to commit this time. So welcome and congratulations. Madam Chairwoman, I am Sean Butterley at 59 Litchfield Road. I believe Mark Ramo's appointment is permanent as opposed to interim town manager at your last meeting is symptomatic of the sheer hypocrisy of town manager government over the past 60 years of Watertown government. I was the council vice chairman from 1981 to 83. My wife was a teacher in this building. Then it was called Hemingway Park School. Suppose she had applied for town manager. Then I resigned. Then one month later, Dine was made town manager. The next morning, the chairperson, Mary Jo Giacchetti, who puts Dine in, resigns and exits the Cape permanently. Now, that never happened 38 years ago, but it did happen two weeks ago. In that term as council vice chair, I did fight with the Michigan native town manager. He was writing long memos urging us to give the town's insurance package to the former town council chairperson whose council had appointed him. I felt he had a conflict of interest. You see, 60 years ago, the town was sold a bill of goods that said politics would not be, would be removed when we adopted town manager government. Well, politics were not removed. We, the people, just lost our right to elect our chief executive. Two weeks ago, Republican Chair Eric Markowitz was ebullient in the paper celebrating Mark Ramo's appointment under this bizarre political scenario. I don't blame him. He's controlling the whole game in town without the public's input. His friend and colleague became chief executive when in any of our surrounding towns, Mark would be a Republican candidate for first election and face an opponent in this fall. That is why me, mayoral petitioners, many of whom can easily be convinced to move from elected select or government again, urge 11 no votes on November 3 on the lengthy and tedious Rob Kain majority charter revision report. It's time to restore a real democracy in Watertown. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, in the back. It's already on.
Okay. My name's John Everett. Okay, I live at 2 Everett Lane. The purpose for me being here tonight is to try and revoke before a former action of the zoning board, okay, which basically made a change to the Everett Lane property, all the properties on the road. And based on the chapter 124, the zoning Connecticut General Assembly, it's almost impossible to do unless there's a major mistake. Okay, well, here's the major mistake. There are two differences. There's a 125 zoning and there's a R30. And one Franklin Pelosi says is wrong, okay? The R30 is wrong. The other one is the zoning map, okay, which is saying that it's whatever, 125, okay? The truth of the matter is that the R30 is correct. Now, Mr. Pelosi asked for a correction. And that correction is impossible in the event that there was nothing wrong with the system in the beginning, okay? And I have his application, which states, a little bit messed up because we went to the high school first. What do you call it? Said it was there. Okay. The application states to restore, okay? You can't restore what never was, okay? That property is R30, has been since 1955. Then it says there's evidence, okay, to what? He's stating that the 125 zoning is the correct zoning, okay? The only evidence that is there is that there's a difference between the two, between the assessor's card and the zoning map. Now, it says change to R30 due to a mistake. There is no mistake. This I can prove beyond a shadow of a doubt, okay? Okay, that they want to continue the zoning to a 125. All right. As I said, the zoning has never been 125. It has always been R30. Franklin Pelosi sent out notifications, okay? The notification says, "Application from Attorney Franklin Pelosi to amend to the Watertown zoning map from R30 to 125." Okay, that's all it said. And he lists six different properties. 4 Everett Lane, 3 Everett Lane, 2 Everett Lane, 1 Everett Lane, 558, and 542. Okay. On the list here, four did not get a registered letter, okay? Everett Lane is not listed. And with his corrected zoning, okay? Everett Lane is going to be an R30. And everything east of it is going to be 125. And everything west of it is going to be 125. And the reason it didn't get in letter is because Everett Lane does not exist based on the assessor's map. Now, if anybody has a cell phone here, I don't care where you are in the world, you'll find Everett Lane. But the assessor's map is saying it doesn't exist. Now, we have a choice. One's right, one's wrong. Now, if it, one says there's no Everett Lane and the other one is listed on the zoning map, then I guess it's there. The other ironic thing is that the zoning map, okay, indicates that the chairman of the zoning board, okay, said that that zoning map is correct and proper. It's the best of his ability. Now, the person that signed it is Eric Markowitz. And Eric Markowitz is the one that's filing this complaint through Franklin Pelosi saying that that zoning map is wrong. There's a little bit of confusion here, but that vote should have never went to the zoning board. It should have gone to the assessor's office. And very briefly, okay, because this is family and I'm going to do this very fast. And anytime after this meeting, okay, anybody wants to call me or meet with me, okay? Fell's Farm, which is the corner of Davis Street and 63. And it also borders Everett Lane. Now, remember Everett Lane is the boundary for the 552 property. And it never got a card because it's not on the assessor's map. So how can you not send a card to the boundary of your property? But that being said, okay, Fell's Farms, relatives. The Fell's were that corner on 63 and Davis Street. The two buildings up on the top, that was Fell's Farm. If you come down to where 542 is, that happened to be Martha Fell's home. She married a McMahon. That property, okay, exchanged from Fell's to McMahon to James Locking, Sr. James Locking, Sr. wound up passing away and his son, okay, took ownership of that property. But that property was put in place in 1932.
Excuse me, sir. I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm certain this is very important to you. But unfortunately, we have no control. You need to go back to planning and zoning or to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Well, I know what you're saying.
We have no, no ability to change what you're talking about.
Based on, okay, what has to be proved, okay, is that there is a gross mistake. And there is a gross mistake. The people weren't notified, okay? The application was filled out to zoning and we have until the 25th to make an appeal. Now, here's the problem, okay? I'm not spending $50,000 so that Eric Markowitz can get a spot zone change with the aid of Franklin Pelosi. So I'm saying that this board, okay, should talk to the zoning board and say that this application should not have ever been brought before this board. This is not a joke. This is five square miles of R12, or R30, rather. R30 represents all the way from Spencer Road, okay, over to Mount Olive. Now, you're going to take a section of this road and you're going to change the zoning and then you're going to leave in the middle a 40-foot strip, okay? This Everett Lane, that's where the zoning problem came in, okay? Because the assessor's office doesn't know what happened to Everett Lane. With the building of Williamson Circle, it got lost. But I have proof. I have written documents. I have a letter from Sherman Slavin in 96, okay, stating that it was in the existence of the owner, okay, which is Woodruff.
Sir, sir, we cannot do anything to assist you. The council doesn't have that authority.
The council has the authority to go to the zoning board and say, you made a mistake. And I can prove that mistake. And anything other than that, okay? Like I said, this isn't spot zoning. And I'm telling you that the ink wasn't even dried when this was approved because that zoning board, not one member on that zoning board, okay, looked at this application, okay? Two months they had it. They didn't even look at it. And because of this letter being so brief, okay, I only found out what was going on the morning of the meeting.
You indicate you have a few days for an appeal. It would appear that maybe that's the path you should take.
In other words, go to court.
I don't know. Is that how you make the appeal?
That's how you make the appeal. Yeah, well, I have this in court right now. I don't know if he's here, okay? But this is in court, okay? And the town asked for an extension. Well, because of the virus, okay? I don't know if I'm going to live long enough to see this extension through. It's been over a year now and the extension's there. So what I am saying is that, okay, a decision was made and it was made wrong and it was applied for wrong. And I'm telling you that the chairman of the zoning board at that time signed the paper saying it is correct. And then he was so easy to say, oh, there's the problem. It was not a problem. And I've had, had meetings, okay, with Paul Jessel, okay? The town attorney, attorney of my own, okay? And this is all prior. I have a letter from the engineer of Watertown, Paul, okay, that did the zoning in there, did the surveying in there. And I have a letter from him saying that the zoning is R30. And now this is going to go past. And when I said I will apply for the same thing and just reverse it because it's baloney, okay? I was told that you could do that, not a problem. It's only about $600. But it will never make the desk. It'll wind up in the garbage pail. That's garbage. Anyway, I'm asking this board to take it upon themselves to go check this out. And I, this could be proven, okay, in a matter of minutes in the town clerk's office and the zoning board. Matter of minutes. Not the Everett Lane part, but as far as these properties and my sister's property, 558, is completely conforming. And now they're changing that to a 125. Come on, this is baloney. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. Have a good evening.
Well, thank you for coming. Is there anyone else?
Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. This probably would have been more appropriate to say at the meeting that you held on September 16, but I was not aware of that meeting. I'm trying to find out how it was noticed because I usually get the notices by email and I knew nothing about that meeting. So I apologize. This might be a little late, but it's very important. The hiring of Mark Ramo appears to be in violation of the version of Ethics Ordinance 3-10 that is online. I was informed that the online version did not reflect the changes that were made on January 7 of 2019. When researching this, I found that the ordinance was not changed in accordance with the motion that was made and voted on. The motion in the ordinance Subcommittee Minutes also confirms my recollection because I attended all the meetings and the public hearing on the Ethics Ordinance change. Language was removed from the ordinance, but it was not put on the record at any meeting. The ordinance Subcommittee motion that was made by Case Duplessis and seconded by Anthony DeBona reads, quote, "I make a motion to accept Section 3-10 public employees/officials as written by Attorney Jessel to take out two years and make it 12 months and to have the word 'former' either in the title or in paragraph B," end quote. That's the entirety of the motion. The motion was voted aye by DeBona, Duplessis, and Ramsey and nay by Demers. The updated ordinance has more language removed. Specifically, the words, quote, "with the town or its." Attorney Jessel did not write up the new ordinance in accordance with the motion that was passed. So the language, quote, "with the town or its" may legally still be part of that ordinance. The council's vote included language that had not been approved by the Subcommittee. I'm not the only person who attended those meetings and the public hearing and the public never heard that "with the town or its" was going to be removed. The motion only said the word "former" was being removed. If the word "town" is included in the ordinance, the ordinance would read, "No public employee or public official shall apply for nor be granted any employment with the town or any of its municipal board or agency in which he has been employed or on which he has served at any time during the preceding 12 months unless that employee or official possesses such integral knowledge of some municipal project or operation that is necessary for the town to access. However, in such case, such employment shall be temporary and only on an as-needed project basis." Mark Ramo's hiring would appear to violate this ordinance as he is a public official seeking employment by the town. Since this may be a very costly mistake that was made by Attorney Jessel, the council should consult Attorney Suma to investigate this. I don't know if a contract has already been signed. I wish I was here at the last meeting, but the town could face legal action for violating the Ethics Ordinance. And another subject I was going to say, but since you brought up the fact that you're going to put, have an email address so that we could communicate is a big plus and I do appreciate that. Because at the last meeting, when Tom Nguyen had a spectacular attack on me, I felt that I should have had the opportunity to say something. So you don't have a second comment anymore. I don't know how it will play out because people are going to be able to communicate with the, through the email. But by not having the second participation, I was unable to make any comments to what he had to say, which, if he was trying to embarrass me, it did not. I thought he embarrassed himself. But for the record, my issue with Charter Section 202 has nothing to do with a single mother living with a family in town taking part in the government so long as she's paying rent. I don't believe anyone should, should serve on the town council who's not contributing to the tax base. That does not mean you have to own a home in town. A person can be paying rent to a landlord and the landlord would be paying the taxes to the town. The coming and going between residents, residences and making no contribution to Watertown shouldn't be allowed. That was my point for asking for the charter change to Section 202 that should be considered, not what Tom Nguyen said at the last meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me. Could you leave your comments with regard to the Ethics Ordinance?
Yes.
With Sue?
Sure.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address?
Good evening. My name's Marguerite Christie. I've been a homeowner here in Watertown for 11 years. And I test and affirm that the following statements are true and accurate. I did send you all a cease and desist and I only heard from Mr. Gavallas. So the biological hazards from 4G, 5G, wireless facilities, highly unnatural, pulse-modulated microwave radiation are scientifically established. If not properly regulated, the 4G, 5G, so-called small-cell antennas with macrocell power would be deployed in close proximity to our homes, schools, and healthcare facilities with 24/7, 365 harmful exposure to the radiation. Since the Telecom Act preempted neither health effects nor operations, these matters are within your regulatory authorities. Tens of thousands of peer-reviewed studies have demonstrated that radio frequency microwave radiation produces suppressed melatonin and sleep impairments, headaches, dizziness, memory and learning impairments, cardiac arrhythmias, immune impairments, DNA damage, cancer, infertility, miscarriages, neurodevelopmental complications, particularly in exposed fetuses. The many additional wavelengths to be deployed can interfere with electronic medical devices such as pacemakers and hearing aids. The radiation is especially damaging to children born and unborn. The brains absorb up to 10 times more radiation than do adults' brains. Such whole organism and cellular damage is not limited to humans, but also occurs in pets, farm animals, and wild lives, especially our pollinators. Contrary to what you heard when Senator Blumenthal's February 2019 hearing, in which he questioned an industry agent who claimed a lack of study. The exact science is, is voluminous and long established with corresponding applications in medicine, many industries, and the military. Industry-funded studies are plentiful and many conclude harm. Even the guideline setting for Institute for Electronic and Electrical Engineers Committee chose over 120 studies and they all conclude in harm. Given that our cease and desist notice of August 6 received no response and that irritating infrastructures are being constructed without an ordinance in place, that it is in accordance with current federal laws and precedents, we urge you to declare immediately a six-month moratorium for the purpose of your learning the relevant scientific, technical, and legal facts and establishing with us an appropriate ordinance. Thank you. I'll leave this with her.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Well, good evening. I'm here on a positive note. State Rep. Joe Paletta for Watertown, Oakville, Woodbury. Certainly not going to represent you in the General Assembly and to be here tonight for what I think is a momentous occasion for our town. Just about a month and a half ago, I attended an official ribbon cutting and ceremony hosted by the local veterans of foreign wars. I'm joined tonight by Rich D. Federico from the Oakville Post. He's also a former, former council member. And for this reason, we met at the newly constructed bridge in Oakville. Now, many of you are familiar with this bridge. It's right behind Steel Brook and it really connects Main Street with the Greenway that we've been working on. Now, I was on this council for six years and we approved the original funds for that Greenway and it's coming along extremely well. But that footbridge was something that really was a core piece of that Greenway. After that footbridge was constructed, I can't tell you how many people in town drive by it every day and say, what a beautiful job it was done. But we needed a name for that footbridge. And I, through my work with the VFW and in constant contact with Rich here, thought that we should do something again for the veterans because I'm going to take a quote out of Louis Raz's playbook here that he always says, the seniors and the veterans built this town. And I can't agree with him more. And when I saw the, it was probably over 100 people attend this event, all from Oakville and Watertown, veterans about the Korean War, which is also known as the Forgotten War. And what they did was they came. We had the color guard there, our beautiful police department with their color guard. We had the National Anthem sung. And I think it was a testament to our veterans because we don't have anything for the Korean War. So I'm going to turn it over to Rich for one minute. And I just want to speak in favor of your agenda item tonight. I hope it will be a unanimous vote to officially name this bridge and so we can place a plaque there. Thank you. Okay, switch seats. All right, this is on Louis Raz's playbook again. Richard D. Federico, I'm on 85 Davis Street. Actually, ladies, if we go back, we're going back that far about the building the town. The Oakville VFW, one time, had 2,000 members back in the 80s. We're down to 700. It was 80 to 100 a year, okay? But we at the, hopefully at the Oakville VFW, try not to forget any veterans. And I want to thank the council and I want to thank the town for not forgetting the Korean War veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Denise Russ, 135 Porter Street, Watertown. I emailed John Gavallas about a month ago and he was kind enough to give me two names of two town- and he was kind enough to give me two names of two town employees to answer a question. There is a storm drain on Echo Lake Road that hasn't been fixed in about a month and a half, two months. John gave me the name of Bob at the Highway Department and Roy Kavanaugh. I called Bob, I left the message at the Highway Department, never got back to me. I called Roy's office and I spoke to his secretary or whoever works for him. She took down my statement and she says, "I'll talk to Roy and I'll get back to you." I haven't heard from anybody. John is the only one who helped me out and I still don't know what the problem is on Echo Lake Road. It's coming around the bend. I think it's right about where the house is with the horses in that area. And at nighttime, if you're not used to it, it, it leaves a big gap like this. And I'm just concerned for people driving at night that don't see it and I don't understand what's taken so long.
We'll bring it to their attention again. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? We will close public comments and move on to the agenda. Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 18, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes from August 18th, please say aye.
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 Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
You want them to raise their hands again? How many were there? Okay, motion passes. Second one.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 8, 2020.
There are seconds?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of September 16, 2020.
Second.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Item A under New Business. Oh, sorry, you're right, it's on manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, let me begin by informing you, our assessor, Donna Murphy, submitted her resignation today, effective on October 16. She has advised me that she would be available to assist us, perhaps on Fridays, if that position isn't filled by then. And I do not anticipate it will be filled by then, but we're gonna act forthwith to get that position filled as quickly as possible. It's a very important position. I'm pleased to report the Board of Education will be moving into their new spaces on Tuesday, October 13. The Secretary of State's office has notified our town clerk that we're gonna be eligible for financial assistance for the upcoming November 3 election in the amount of $14,525. Those funds will easily cover the postage for mailing in, the mailing the ballots to our voters who wish to vote by mail. As of today, the town clerk has received approximately 1,500 requests for mail-in ballots. Now, to put that in perspective, at the last presidential election four years ago, we received 700 requests in its entirety for the election. And we have already doubled that in the first week and a half with those valid applications came out. So we anticipate several thousand requests coming in. We have begun the process of cleaning out the annex in the old town hall. Once that effort is completed, we'll be able to put those properties up for sale. The Kmart building on Straits Turnpike is, work is continuing there. That is gonna be turned into six separate businesses. There will be three 20,000 square feet of buildings there. One of them will be occupied, we are told, by a fitness center. Another will be occupied by a national chain hardware store. And the remaining spaces have not signed leases yet, so we don't know who will be going in there. The former Sealy property in Oakville has been declared remediated by the Department of Environmental Protection. Copy of that report has been sent to the Corporate Council of Sealy and they have assured us they will pass it on to the national realty firm that is handling the sale of the Sealy property. So that should be going up for sale very shortly, if it is not up for sale already. One final thing on the Muscala property on Park Road has been sold to Universal Welding and the new owner is gonna erect an 18,400-square-foot building on the property. He also has plans to develop the rest of the 64 acres with possibly two additional industrial buildings. That will certainly be helping our tax base. The present Universal Welding building has been sold to USA Hauling, which is right next door, and they'll be using it as their welding facility. So although we lost Universal Welding there, we gained a new building. We didn't lose the building because USA Hauling bought it. So we're gaining a new structure for, that's our tax base. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. New business, item A.
I move to approve the Town of Watertown Employee Handbook effective October 1, 2020. This handbook will replace the current version of the personnel rules and regulations. All policies incorporated will apply to all town employees, including those employees within bargaining, bargaining units. Bargaining units contracts will supersede these policies if such policies conflict.
John, do you wanna make any comment about how this was put together?
Sure. Put this book together, I think it's something that we've needed for a very long time. It contains all our rules and regulations, our policies, in one document. So each employee would be given a copy of this booklet and it would have all of the information they need in, as far as our sexual harassment policy, employment opportunity policies, recruitment, selection, appointment to positions. Everything will be in one, one manual.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions, John? All those in favor of approving the new handbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item B.
I move to, I move to authorizing the installation of a plaque on the pedestrian bridge at Steel Brook Greenway dedicating the bridge to veterans of the Korean War.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wanna comment or have a question? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item C.
I move to retain the services of Godin Property Brokers as the agent of record for the sale of the town hall annex in town hall. At the contract rate of 6% of the sale price with co-broker, fee reduced to 5% if Ed Godin and Brian Godin are the only brokers, agents involved in the transaction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor.
Sorry, Madam Chairwoman? Sure. Just for the record, could we state why, why we prefer this?
It's my understanding that Godin has a lot of experience with commercial development and commercial sales. As I'm sure the other two, Tom Hill and Matthew Commercial Properties were also bitters on our request for proposals. But Godin seems to be the one with the most experience and hopefully will be successful in, in the sale of our buildings.
To the chair. They also include a lot of good references of properties in town that are commercial in nature.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion to award the services to Godin, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing and appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $4,156 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comment? All those in favor of the tax refunds, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second to the resolution?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, yeah.